One second. Okay, um, he will not be attending.
He will not be attending.
He will not.
You don't think it would be funny?
No. Okay, we're live. Alright. So we have three, right?
Yes.
That's who I see, okay. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and get this uh planning commission special meeting started at five oh six P M. And. Okay, and Gabe, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Alright, I'm ready to get.
Thank you. Okay, can we please get roll call?
Uh alternate commissioner Gutierrez, absent commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Here.
Commissioner Liya, absent commissioner Navarrete, or by sure now that it absent and Chair V.
Here. Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on to approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request moving of an item on the agenda. Do we have any requests from commissioners? Do we have any requests from staff?
Uh no questions.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes and I'm not sure if we can approve the minutes. I won't.
You were here the last.
Yeah, so I won't be um part of that, but.
Okay, and we would probably to uh continue that to another meeting.
Okay.
So that uh the body of consider it. It would that be correct? So we don't have a majority here to refer the minutes.
Yes, if uh the commissioner, if um chairwoman is going to abstain, then I would recommend you continue it so you can approve it at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and um.
Want to wish to want to wish to continue approval minutes of the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue approval of the next minutes, let's be.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second question.
Thank you. And can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
And Chair V.
I, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to written communications. Do we have anything?
No written communications outside of items that uh armed the general layer.
Okay, thank you. So we're moving on to public comments for non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda, but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof. Please leave me your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments at this time? Okay, seen none. We're gonna move on to reports and requests. Um, do we have any reports from staff?
Uh no reports from staff.
Okay, and do we have any requests from the commission? Okay, so we're gonna move on to, don't have any non-hearing items, so we're gonna go straight into our public hearing calendar. And our first item is item number two, and it's Santa Fe Restaurant for Alcohol Sales. Um, whenever you're ready, Steph.
Okay, thank you, Chair V ten Commission Gabriel, that is your Development Services Director. So this item before you is a requested conditional use permit three fifty-five for our restaurant expansion. The restaurant is called Santa Fe Restaurant, and it is located within the Grapefruit Shopping Center, which includes a food for less and probably some other storage you're familiar with. Uh so Santa Fe Restaurant, they've been there for for a while. They do have an existing A B C type forty-seven license for unsold beer, wine, and distilled spirits. Uh they are originally were located in suite two of the pad that they're located at, and that's the pad directly adjacent to River Boulevard, but they've expanded into suites three and four. Uh and so here's a map that shows the location in the shopping center. Uh does the zoning is uh general commercial. So the Santa Fe Restaurant, they actually expanded their indoor footprint into suites three and four. Uh suite three and four used to be the Takeria Montelban. And uh so that restaurant closed, and so that provided opportunity for Santa Fe Restaurant to uh lease those two new suites and but they didn't get the proper authorization from Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. And so they need to get that. Uh part of that is ensuring that they have an active uh conditional use permit. So originally, the Santa Fe Restaurant didn't have a conditional use permit with city because they were um open before we had the C P requirements. But whenever a restaurant that serves alcohol expands uh their their footprint, they have to get uh C P approval. So that's why they're great for us. So it's actually their first C P. Um, and uh so this will actually kind of set them up for the future as well. Uh and as far as the municipal code does require, uh this is this is the code requirement. So an increase in floor area use for the display of liquor and ten percent increase in facing shelves used for the display of liquor. Uh so this kind of applies to restaurants, but also applies to like liquor stores and and markets. Here is the location, so um the sign is still up there, Takeria Montelban. So code enforcement actually provided us some comments where they recommend a condition that requires something the restaurant to remove the signage to make sure that comes down and that attached up matches the stucco. So you'll see that at the end in our recommendations. So something the restaurant is shown on the right-hand side, and they've expanded into the Takeria Montelban. Uh here are the existing conditions for those taken today inside the restaurant, so you can kind of see it's quite a big indoor area for dining. Um and they actually have a stage area, so um they have a stage area for for music. Uh so they need to get actually an entertainment permit separately from the commission use permit. So they actually submitted an application for that. That entertainment permit gets reviewed by the the city council.
Okay.
So that's not before you today, uh but we did add a condition that if you prove the C P that uh you know, they kind of like entertainment requires them to get that approval first, so.
So it's on their radar and like the city's gonna work with them and tell them like this is what you have to do. Okay.
Yeah, so the earliest, I mean, city council meetings are going dark in in August.
Right.
The earliest that entertainment permit will go before the council would probably be in September.
Okay.
So the the restaurant that was there before, Montelban, did they have a liquor license or?
No, cuz that was also before we have the C P requirements, so those started in two thousand sixteen.
Right, okay.
Both of these restaurants, I think, I think they've been there since like two thousand, at least twelve, it's been a while.
Is there any condition? I I was just there, I think, like two weeks ago. Um, and I know that they have those two entrances you can use to enter or exit. And then there's that other one, I think the one that used to be for Takeria, whatever it was called. Um, yeah, there we go. Are they, so it's on that like left side over there. Are they going to open that again, that entrance, or they're just gonna leave it closed off? Cuz they have it closed off right now with something.
Um, yeah, so I think I think it's closed cuz they have a bar area right there.
Okay.
So there's there's a few things that happened. So there's tenant improvements that occurred inside without building permits.
Mm-hmm.
And so so that's a concern for us in the city that we wanna make sure whatever is done inside the building is is safe.
Right.
Health department, fire department review. So all that still needs to happen, right?
Okay.
So part of this C P requires that for the C P to actually go into effect, to get all the proper permits.
Mm-hmm.
Because the restaurant, uh inside the restaurant, the kitchen expanded.
Uh-huh.
You know, obviously, the indoor dining area extended, the restrooms were reconfigured.
Yeah.
So all of that requires uh permitting by the city and make sure that it follows our standards and make sure it's safe. So that's also part of this. Uh so uh if you issue the C P today or approve it, it's not saying that they can completely expand their restaurant. Uh they they have to make sure that they get the billing permits before.
Okay.
It goes into effect.
It's good.
Uh so this other, this is kind of that barrier which I think Mike covered. Well, no, it looks like the.
Yeah, it's on the other.
Side of it.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the side.
So all that would be evaluated during the building permit stage.
Okay.
So um so you can see it says suite three.
Yeah.
Right there. So whether that's still um a proper exit, considering the new size. Uh I don't have the answer to that. That would be valued by our building official when they submit tenant improvement plans.
Just a safety issue, you know, I can make sure that.
Yeah.
Everybody able to get in now, you know.
Actually, they only have one entrance and one, so the that door that you see where it's a suite three, I think that's what they use to for folks to enter and exit. I don't think they have another entrance.
I think that I've I've been there before, so it's on the other side of the bar, there's another entrance, I used to see the original.
Yeah, and I think it's closed.
Okay.
I think.
That's before the expansion, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, but I thought it was still open.
It might be, I may be wrong.
Those are things that would need to be addressed to the the building permitting.
Okay.
Uh because it's like fire access issues and building issues. Um, you know, they've, and so that kind of shows you where it was expanded. That used to be the dividing wall between the suites. So all that would be reviewed. Now, this is a floor plan that they provided to Alcohol Beverage Control.
Okay.
And so on the on the right-hand side, you could see the area that's outlined in black, which was the original area for the restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
And uh the new areas highlighted in pink. Uh that bar area that's in the original area, that's actually new. So there's there's some reconfiguration that happened.
Right.
In the original area. Now, the applicant also proposes to do outdoor kind of patio dining. And so uh but that also needs to be reviewed, and that can be reviewed administratively, uh but the planning commission can weigh in on that patio, uh cuz we don't have a lot of detail here. We don't have detail about um like the number of seats that would be outside. A B C would have to certify that patio area if they wanna serve alcohol outside.
Yeah.
Uh it's up to the planning commission if you wanna limit um alcohol service indoor or if you wanna allow for that to be outside patio, or if you want that to come back to the planning commission when there's more detail.
Wasn't that temporarily because of COVID, it doesn't close?
They were outside and they had, yeah, they had that entire area. I think they actually moved into the, not only the sidewalk, but also like the parking lot, right?
Yeah, there were more relaxed requirements for restaurants.
Yeah, I mean during COVID.
And even with with A B C.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So um so there's the outdoor patio they're proposing on on the north side and on the on the the west side. Uh and so this is what was submitted to A B C. Um, so as far as expansion details, uh so they've kind of increased that that kitchen area. Um, they have the the bar inside that that would seat up to six persons. And then in the indoor, there would be seating with thirty tables um and a hundred and forty seats, right? So a hundred and forty people could see, be seated inside the restaurant in addition to six persons at the the bar. Uh so all the all the occupancy levels would be reviewed with the bill of permit as well. The applicant also requests to serve uh food in that door dining area that I mentioned. Um, the size is about eight hundred fifty square feet outside, but the tables and seating isn't identified on the plans. Uh the advertised hours of operation for the restaurant are Monday through Wednesday, eight to ten P M, and then Thursday through Sunday, eight P M to to one A M. Eight A M to to one A M. Uh staff doesn't have any concerns about their hours of operation. It's just there's a condition that required them to have last call at twelve thirty, so uh they were, that wasn't something that was, unfortunately, there wasn't a commission use permit that the city had for that. Um, and then just lastly, the entertainment permit application I mentioned, that will be considered separately by the city council. Uh I anticipate that would be in September. Uh typically with some of these C U Ps, uh we look at distance requirements from uh residential uses from other alcohol licenses in the area and also the distance from schools. And so the nearest residential area is Telomobile Home Park, which is within seven hundred feet. So Charlie's Elementary School is more than eight hundred feet away, so that's not within that seven hundred foot radius, and have municipal code. And then the nearest other alcohol license establishments are Food for Less and Me Lingo, Sinola. So those are all on the same shopping center. Uh but the 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 thing here is that this is an existing restaurant with an existing license, so it's not like we're locating a new.
An additional.
Establishment, it already exists there, so it's not like uh they already had uh an alcohol license before C P requirements were in place, so we don't think those exceptional requirements apply kind of in this case. But uh you know, at the end, we did include the findings for distance if the planning commission thought that they apply. But in Sasa Canyon, it wouldn't apply because it's an existing establishment. So staff does recommend the planning commission approve the C P subject to the findings, conditions in the resolution and modify with additional condition. Uh as I mentioned, code enforcement was concerned about the signage from the original business that was in suites um uh three and four, Takeria Montelban, so we wanna see that. They moved patched up and stuck opinion to match the existing exterior. A lot of times, when send or move, we don't get it patched up or to match the existing exterior, so we wanna make sure language is in there.
Good.
But uh that's the end of my staff report. You know, I'm not sure if the applicant is is in the audience, but his name is Pedro Pedia. But if he is, I'm not sure if he has any comments regarding his application.
Okay.
So we'll revisit the patio on the outside.
You could, or you could decide that um that can be reviewed with the building permits that are submitted. So uh but as far as detail on the patio, that that's all I have is the side of it.
That.
Wanna.
And that they wanna expand. Okay, um, any other, so thank you for the presentation. Uh before we open up the public hearing, do we have any comments or additional questions from the commission?
Uh just a question, Gabriel. I end up, one of the pictures, you see that the tile looks different cuz it's two different locations. Um is it, I just wanna make sure that the, there's no issue between those two tiles like any A D A. Would that be with the building permits when people walk over to those places?
Yeah, so all that needs to still be evaluated with the billing permit. So so you're, if you decided to approve the conditional use permit today, uh it's not gonna go into effect. There's a condition that requires them to submit billing permits and get those approved before it's considered effective. So all those issues like A D A, I don't know what all those issues are until they actually submit their tenant improvement plans. And so.
Thank you.
We gotta, just so you're aware that we've had a building inspector communicate with the applicant, what the requirements are and make sure that they submit on time.
That's good. Okay, any other questions from the commission? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing at five twenty-five P M. And do we have any public comments or questions on this item? Nope, we don't. We didn't get any written communications for this one.
I know.
Okay, so seeing we don't have any public comments, we're gonna close the public hearing at five twenty-five P M. And would anyone like to make a motion on item number two?
I'll make a motion uh of staff recommendation uh that the planning commission approve condition, conditional use number three fifty-five with the findings and conditions listed in the resolution. Number P C twenty twenty-two, desk thirty, and modify with the additional condition as followed.
Are are we also able to add that once they get their building permit and all that situated that we see this item again and take a look at the patio, like what they're thinking of doing there, or they're also thinking of taking over the parking lot?
Yeah, you could add that. So if you wanted to start to come back, you know, we, I seen this before, let's come back as a monitoring.
Yeah.
Or whatever you choose to do, they could come back, but uh that would slow their condition.
Okay.
For the indoor.
Good.
Okay.
And so uh but if you want that to come back for review, uh we can't, we can't have that come back.
Should I just add it to the?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna recommend that that patio, I'll say patio comes back for review as a non-non-item issue.
Non-hearing, yeah.
Right, 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 okay.
Okay, do we have a second or do we have other, a different motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. And can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Alright.
Commissioner Figueroa. Commissioner Figueroa. Oh, you're on you. Chair V.
I. Okay, thank you. We are gonna move on to item number three, which is Urban Employment Center General Plan Amendment. Whenever you're ready, Steph.
I have a quick presentation on this. Okay, so this item before you, um actually, it is is a city initiative effort, and so we have the city managers here that can probably preface my presentation today. Uh so Dr. Gabriel Martin is also joining us on the speaking today.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, I have been the city manager. I wanted to kind of do the historical background for this project and give you kind of a premise of what it was, what it entailed. This uh part is part of the T C C grant that we applied for on uh June first, I mean, I'm sorry, July first. It's the California Transformative Climate uh Climate Grant that we applied for, for thirty-five million dollars. One of the key components of it were, which were, which Mr. Perez will uh explain is the affordable housing unit in which it which in competition is uh change of zone. The city uh wanted to add a affordable housing to this grant, which was a vital component, and our partner for this was Chelsea. They just finished the Puerto Rico project, and they're doing the triple E project, so this would be maybe their fourth or fifth project they would do in the city. We uh we included them as a partner for this grant to, uh and we allocated them twelve million dollars to uh do this new affordable housing project. Unfortunately, there were uh restraints with uh picking a site for this project. We, the biggest one was site control. Unfortunately, the city of Coachella does not own large properties. We sold uh our largest property last year, forty acres, to D R Horn for uh housing um through the Surplus Land Act. Uh the, our second biggest property we own is nine acres, which is agricultural ponds right now, where a lot of the farms dump their ag water into, which would take, you know, a few, a lo- a long process to mitigate and clean up. And then the third one was this site, uh seven acres that the city owned. We figured it would be a good site uh next to rail, uh next to some businesses, and we died due to a short time and short resources. We uh determined this would be the best site for this affordable housing project because of site control. Uh and you know, Gabriel, Mr. Perez worked very hard to, um you know, we have one month to kind of make this process happen uh for the grant to keep moving forward. We did get good news that uh only seven people, I mean, five people applied, brought to the state of California for three spots. So we are looking real well. They actually reached out to us and wanted to do, wanting to do a site visit. So that's coming in uh late August, so we seem to have submitted a favorable project that uh our grant proposal that they they uh they really enjoyed, and they're gonna come out to look at all the sites or meet with our partners and to uh kind of uh show uh what Coachella can do in regards to try and transform and uh make people's eyes better. Uh with that being said, I'll hand it over to Gabe to give you the details of the change of zone for this affordable housing project.
Thank you, City Manager Martin. Uh so so this item includes uh two land use changes. One is a general plan amendment that could change the land use of that uh seven point eight acre site owned by the city from Urban Employment Center. Uh you know, actually, I'm sorry about that. It's actually from Industrial District to Urban Employment Center. And uh and the same thing with the change of zone from a heavy industrial to um to Urban Employment Center. Uh here's here's the the correct designation. So this is the site. Um it's actually, it's located on an industrial wave. We own two of those uh those properties shown. Seven point eight acres uh in its entirety. It's located near the railroad. Uh most of that area is considered the Rancho Coachella Business Park. Uh so there are existing industrial uses across the way is the Woodspur uh packing uh establishment, and there's a few other uh packing establishments. So there's truck traffic that's generated along industrial ways, so we do wanna acknowledge that there is those industrial uses uh to the east, but also to the north. So you have the A T S Stone Corporation, Western Waterworks, Jones Brothers Construction, um you know, Pacific Railroad, uh and then it's vacant uses directly to the south. Uh there is kind of an easement between uh which we see throughout the industrial park that continues across industrial wave. There used to be like a rail spur that extended across there. Uh the city owns that right away. Uh but uh that that rail spur has been abandoned. I don't know if you can see what I'm talking about. It's like the narrow strip that kind of crosses industrial way from the railroad to the north of the site. Uh so we own the site. Uh so this this zoning and general plan amendment would position the the property for uh potential future development. Our city manager mentioned that we did apply for a transformative climate community grant, so this doesn't guarantee that there would be any development on the site related to this grant. We haven't been awarded that grant, but it does position ourselves for that. Uh we would have to have the land use changes in place before August first, and so obviously, we're we're uh a week before that date. Um, the site could accommodate, according to Chelsea, what what they would propose is a hundred sixteen uh units that could include affordable housing, but also a potential office for a conservation center. Uh that's detailed in your staff report. Um, so this would change the the land use from heavy industrial zoning to urban employment uh center. So Urban Employment Center designation, at least in the general plan, that's actually um a more flexible land use that's in the general plan. So it does allow for some uh office, research, and development that that you normally would see in an industrial area. Uh but it it doesn't prohibit manufacturing, distribution, or warehouses. So it does prioritize office and research. Uh but on a on a um you know, on a minimal level, it does allow for some manufacturing, distribution, or warehouse within the land use, but it also accommodates housing on there. Uh so we did, uh it does also accommodate retail and other services that could be uh located in that zone. So this is our general planned land use map in the city, so you could uh see the uh industrial district is in purple, and so that area that's labeled number seven is the area that we're talking about, the Rancho Coachella Business Park. Uh the the Urban Employment Center is actually that, uh I guess, bluish kind of dark purple area that you see in number five and number six on the plan. So you could see, it's really close to all our industrial districts. So it's kind of because it's more of a compatible use than commercial or uh straight residential zones. So the Urban Employment Center is a more flexible zone. It is areas that we do have that are closer to the airport. Um, and would be in our street influence as well. You can see it between I think Core and Airport Boulevard, but it's also an area that's designated north of the C B W D headquarters. Um, and it's in that zone, a central area that you might remember was presented to the planning commission and city council just east of the railroad. And so this would expand it to the uh those two properties. And so this would expand it to the, uh, those two properties in the Rancho Coachella, uh, Business Park. As far as the the land uses that would be permitted, uh, I mentioned housing, uh, I also mentioned. Uh, some, uh, warehousing and manufacturing, but more office and research and also educational institutions. That would be allowed. The maximum height that would be allowed is by a five-story, uh, building. With density ranges for residential thirty to sixty-five units per acre. Uh, there is available water and sewer service infrastructure, so if we were to rezone these two sites, these could be eligible. For the sixth cycle of housing elements, and so it is difficult to find sites to be eligible for that site inventory. In our housing element, because it does require those sites to be less than ten acres. Uh, that they're not under agricultural production and that they're, um, served by water and sewer services in the city. So really difficult to find that in in the in the city. So this is one of those few sites that we do have control of and that we could rezone. That would also qualify for the housing element. And, uh, this is just a look at the general plan. Uh, amendment, uh, exhibit for the two sites, so we would modify the. And use from industrial district to urban employment center. And then staff prepared an addendum to the Coachella general plan update environment's impact report pursuant to sequela. And based on the evidence, uh, in the addendum, that it is not expected to result in any impacts beyond those that were. Identified and mitigated in the Coachella general plan, E I R, and no significant impacts would occur as a result of. Uh, this general plan amendment or zone change. And that the project with the here staff will general plan policies, the zoning requirements for the the urban employment center. Staff does recommend the planning commission adopt the resolution, uh, recommending city council adopt the addendum. To the general plan update E I R, uh, and, uh, approve ordinance eleven ninety-eight. Uh, recommending approval of the change of zone, the property from, uh, many heavy industrial to urban employment center. Um, just remember that this item is recommended to the city council. The city council would have to consider this, and that would be under to the tomorrow. If the planning commissioner approves it. That's the end of my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. We also do have, um, representative from Terranova, uh, planning and research, and that's Kelly Clark. She helped prepare the addendum to the general plan E I R. If there's any questions about the environmental review for. Uh, this this land use class, reclassification.
Can escape. Um, do we have any questions from commissioners on item number three? So I guess the only thing I just wanna point out, um. So this, if the rezoning were to happen in the general plan amendment for this specific site, it would help with arena numbers, you said, right?
It would, it would help with arena numbers, because it would allow for residences to be booked there, that would. And we also need sites to be included in our housing element that isn't adopted yet, so that would likely come before the planning commission in the fall.
Okay.
So we are kind of struggling to find sites as well.
Right, okay. So that would qualify and be helpful. And then there's also that application for the T C C grant, so.
The T C C grant, um, one other thing I didn't mention, and I mentioned to the planning mission general, um, that. The R C T C did approve, uh, that a future rail line could include.
Right.
In Coachella. So there's two things that we don't know exactly where these things would go, is a future train station as well. Uh, so it may include a train station, it may include, um, some facilities to allow for the trains to be able to. Kind of turn around as well. So there may be need for two sites as well, so this potentially could, uh, facilitate that as well.
Okay, I see.
We don't know that this time. We would have to go through. Study, but, uh, uses like commercial could could, uh, could be appropriate uses around. You know, that that future rail.
Okay, thank you.
So the hundred plus homes, uh, proposing, uh, what's the, are they doing two-story, three-story? So we can go up to five stories. So what's the, what's the thinking on?
Uh, they would probably need like three stories, uh, and they, they need three point six six acres. This whole site is seven point eight eight. So the whole site wouldn't be housing. It would be a portion of the total site.
And then designated for the employment centers is how much of that, or is that?
They're, they're, they're anticipating it being like a mixed-use project where the ground floor, uh, would also be the office. For the con- conservation center.
Okay.
So the the mountains conservancy.
But they're gonna need open space for parking their trucks and vehicles and whatever.
Yeah, so the the remit, the balance of the site, we don't know what would happen on there, so three point six six acres would be for. The the office and the residential units, but the remainder could be kind of future office, research, educational. Or manufacturing warehouse.
Be great for that it allows, I mean, the rezoning would allow for, you know, higher education or. I mean, I think we don't have a lot of places in the city where we could even accommodate that, so that would be really, really cool.
What, one of the things I forgot to mention, the planning commission, we did get a letter, uh, from the public, so this letter. It was provided to on the dais from Betty Schaper, and so they're a property owner to the north, and so they've expressed some concerns where they feel that. Anything that might include housing would be, like, compatible. I did re- reach out to the person that provided this letter. And just to kind of understand the concerns further, they are concerned that any kind of, um, use that would include. You know, housing that isn't industrial. Um, like they're concerned about being pushed out of the industrial park, right? And that, uh, with residential units, you know, you could have complaints about existing uses that are out there. That, uh, you know, maybe the the city, the city would act to shut them down. Um, the city wouldn't do that. Uh, you know, could residents complain? They they could complain, but those uses would be allowed in those, those areas that are existing. Okay, outside of these two projects.
I don't know, I don't know how we reassure, uh, the family that that's not the case and that's not the thinking. But I think that you look at the overall of the industrial park, I mean, we're not even halfway there, so there's gonna be. A a lot of projects that are come, come to. To the table that, you know, they're gonna propose to do. I'm talking about, uh, commercial, you know, some of the other stuff. I don't know, I don't know how we reassure them that, uh, it is an industrial park, so.
Yeah, um, so, so, you know, there, that property isn't heavy industrial, so they would have. All the rights to to do heavy industrial per- permitted uses and develop according to those development standards. So, uh, but, you know, they're, they, you know, obviously they would have a concern for a new use and want to make sure that they continue to operate there. But, uh, they would, they would be able to, I didn't mention that they'd be, do that. Um, they do have concerns about truck traffic and feeling that maybe it's incompatible use. Uh, and so, you know, those are all the concerns and something that, uh, you know, uh, was evaluated as part of this project. Uh, but as far, as far as a new project, we would look at those issues, uh, if there was an actual proposal. That was before the city, but there actually is no construction proposal.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing at five forty-four PM. Do we have any public comments on item number three? Okay, I don't see anyone. Okay, so seeing we don't have any public comments, we're gonna close the public hearing at five forty-four PM. Um, would anyone on the commission like to make a motion or recommendation to staff?
I'll make, uh, the staff recommendation that the planning commission adopt. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine, recommending that the city council adopted it, then. To the city, to the Coachella general plan updating the R, E I R and approve. Of the GPA twenty-two dashes zero one, resolution. Number twenty twenty-two dash thirty, recommending that the city council approve ordinance eleven ninety-eight, change of zone number twenty. Dash zero two.
Thanks for saying that. I'll second that motion. I'll say, second, uh, Commissioner Gonzalez's motion.
All right, thank you, um, and can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
And, uh, Chair.
I. All right. Thank you so much, um, for that presentation. That's a good item. Hopefully we can stay up to date with. What happens in the site, um, once we have more information.
Right, just as far as the grant, uh, I'm not sure, our city manager, I think we're supposed to learn if we received it in October, is that correct?
Correct. We'll find out October, but, uh, like I indicated, they're, they're, they're doing a site visit, which is a positive. Uh, we only five people applied, so we're, we're very optimistic that, or we submit a good grant and, uh, there'll be a favorable. How come everything goes well with the site visit?
Cross our fingers, I think it'll be a nice head to the city, especially the road we go there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well. Thank you commissioners for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Martin. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our informational item. Do we have anything from staff?
Uh, no items other than in August or or going dark, so unless there's something that's pressing right now, there's.
Okay. All right, well. We're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting at five forty-seven PM. Um, thank you, everyone. Enjoy your summer. Stay cool.
Thank you, gentlemen.